I would like, I would now like to call the November 3rd, 2025 Longmont City Council Regular Session to Order. The live stream of this meeting can be viewed on the city's YouTube channel, longmontpublicmedia.org/watch/ or Comcast Channels 8 or 880. Can we have roll call, please?
Mayor Peck. Councilmember Christ.
Present.
Mayor Protem Haddago-Ferring.
Here.
Councilmember McCoy.
Present.
Councilmember Popkin.
Present.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Here.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, in accordance with the Longmont's, uh, city, uh, with the council's rules of procedure and rules for providing public comment are as follows. Only Longmont residents and employees of the city of Longmont may speak during first call public invited to be heard. You must provide your address at the signup sheet before the meeting, or I will not call your name. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Anyone may speak on second reading or public hearing item, and you are asked to add your name to the speaker list for the specific item before the meeting. Anyone may speak during final call public invited to be heard. Members of the audience shall refrain from disruptive, vulgar, or abusive language, applause, heckling, or other actions that interfere with the orderly function of the council. So now we're on to approval, approval of the minutes. Do we have any minutes? Nope. So are there any agenda revisions?
Yes. Item 12B is the review of the application for demolition of 824 Kimbark Street. This should have been listed as a public hearing on the agenda, so following staff's presentation, please be sure to open a public hearing on this item.
Okay. And then are there any, oh, and then were there any, um, was there anything else, or you're gonna do it during the consent?
During consent.
Okay. So are there any motions from council for future agenda items? And, so, let's see here. Okay. Councilmember Yarborough.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So last week, uh, councilmember McCoy and I went to the Weld County Commissioners' meeting, and it was very interesting, and they had a demographer there. I think her name was Kate Wilkinson. And, um, we, we felt like the information was very informational, and a lot of things that we did not know, um, that they were studying and bringing to the table for, regarding Weld County. So I would like to have staff, maybe at the beginning of the year, to have a demographer to come and talk about, um, the changes within our county and also within the city of Longmont, and how we're changing our population, like, um, she was telling Weld County that they need to start, make sure that they include migration, allow people to come in because people aren't having babies. And so, of course, that actually affect the, um, economic system within Weld County if you're not allowing people to come in from other states, or you don't want them to move in, or other people from other countries, whatever. Um, so it was just so much information that I felt like was really good, um, that I didn't know about. So if we can get that information here, it will help us when we getting ready to start revamping, envisioning Longmont to see how we can implement some, that information.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay. And do we have any discussion? Yes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I absolutely agree. I think that was one of the most interesting things. It really did shine a lot of light on, uh, on several counties, including some of Boulder, about where the job markets were, what the job market was going to continue to be, and the, um, socioeconomic aspects of it, and the, uh, the, uh, population, uh, death rate and, and, uh, birth rates were also included in that. And I think, uh, as a community, I think that would be really interesting. It'd be nice if the Boulder County Commissioners did it for all of Boulder County, but I think if, um, as we are the second-largest community in Boulder County, we really do need to know where we are headed, and the demographers seem to have a lot of information about that. And I think we can, uh, you know, focus some of our decision-making on what we look on that. So, yeah, it was, uh, it was quite interesting.
Thank you. Any other? Okay.
Person's name.
Katie Wilkinson, doctor.
Yes. State Demographers' Office, within Dole.
Okay. So we can go ahead and vote. So it was, um, the, it was, the motion was made by Councilmember Yarborough, seconded by Councilmember McCoy. Let's go ahead and vote. Okay, and that carries unanimously. And so, and now we're on to City Manager Report.
For Mayor Council.
Okay. And we have no special reports or presentations, and we're on to first call public invited to be heard, and we have no one on the signup sheet. So we are moving on. So, so let's go ahead. So no one on the list. I will close public invited to be heard, and we are now on to the consent agenda. Can you please read the consent agenda for the record?
Yes. Staff is requesting to pull item 9E regarding the conservation overlay from the consent agenda. Second reading and public hearing for all ordinances introduced on this consent agenda will be held on November 20, November 18th, 2025. Item 9A is ordinance 2025-75, a bill for an ordinance making additional appropriations for expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2025. Item 9B is ordinance 2025-76, a bill for an ordinance authorizing the consent to Vance Brand Municipal Airport lease assignment for hangar parcel H-33E to Hangar 33E LLC. Item 9C is ordinance 2025-77, a bill for an ordinance approving the Fourth Amendment to the lease for Vance, Vance Brand Municipal Airport Parcel SW-P1. Item 9D is ordinance 2025-78, a bill for an ordinance amending Title 15 of the Longmont Municipal Code concerning water-wise, water-wise landscaping and crime prevention through environmental design practices. Item 9E is ordinance 2025-79, a bill for an ordinance amending Title 15 of the Longmont Municipal Code concerning eligibility for application fee waivers for conservation overlay zoning. Item 9F is ordinance 2025-80, a bill for an ordinance approving a development agreement with Tebow Properties to design the first and main transit center and a transit-oriented design project.
Okay. Does anyone want to pull any items? Councilmember Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would like to, Mayor Protem, excuse me, I would like to pull item 9F, please.
Okay. Um, so may I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items 9E and F?
So moved?
Seconded.
So it's, um, it's been moved by, um, Councilmember Popkin, seconded by Councilmember McCoy to move the consent, approve the consent agenda minus E and F.
Yeah. She, she, I heard her.
So we have no ordinances on second reading, so we are now going to items removed from the consent agenda, and we'll start with item, item 9E.
Thank you, members of council. Jennifer Hewitt-Aperson, Principal Planner with Development Services. So we're here as follow-up on direction from City Council to bring back a code amendment related to development review fee waivers for registered neighborhood groups seeking a conservation overlay district. Wanted to just bring this back to you one more time before it goes to public hearing on the 18th. So just to recap, we did have a request for a development application fee waiver for a conservation overlay district. It was determined in discussion with legal, our, our city attorney's office, that the appropriate approach would be to amend the code to allow all registered groups to seek a fee waiver, so if they were inclined. We did present our analysis of potential revenue impacts on October 7th, at which point council determined that they wish to be the decision-maker on such fee waiver requests, and directed staff to bring back a code amendment with criteria for such fee waivers. And that's where we are tonight. So in response to the direction from this council on October 7th, we offer the following amendment to Section 1503050B of the Land Development Code. City Council may by resolution and at sole discretion waive the application fee for registered neighborhood groups seeking a conservation overlay zoning for their respective neighborhood, subject to conditions that shall be considered by council when making such a decision. The first is whether the neighborhood is located in a census tract with a median income that is below 120% of the area median income, whether the registered neighborhood group has presented evidence that at least 50% of property owners support the conservation overlay district, and whether the registered neighborhood group can demonstrate that there are development pressures that are changing the historic character of the neighborhood. So the next steps for this proposed amendment are, any feedback that you might have tonight, and followed by a public hearing with council action at the November 18th meeting of City Council. And with that, I thank you, and if you have any further, any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Okay. Councilmember Christ.
Ms. Hewitt-Aperson, can you tell us, just today, what is 120% AMI? I recognize that'll change.
It will change, and it is subject, it, it depends on household size, and I do not have that number in front of you, in front of me right now, and I was attempting to get some additional data from the census website, but that is not working currently due to situations beyond our control. Molly, is Molly here? Nope. Okay. Yeah. We can have it for the next meeting, and I, I plan to have it for the next meeting.
Okay. And you have a sense that the, the one neighborhood that has been interested in the conservation overlay meets that requirement?
Um, I'm not certain. That's the information I was trying to pull from the census website today, and it was not available. Not available. So, um, the rationale for that cutoff is, you know, presumably neighborhoods that are, you know, below 120% AMI probably have limited fundraising abilities. So that was the rationale that staff thought was reasonable in terms of the cutoff.
Okay. Thanks.
Really quick, generally.
If you think about the housing conversation, 120% AMI is where they say that is kind of the market rate for housing. It, do you want us to give you the 120% AMI from single occupied all the way to six, or do you want us to just give it to you on a family of four, for a point of reference?
Um, City Manager, I think, I think when we were talking about too, too north, we may have been given those figures, so I'm thinking I'm gonna go back and look at that.
You have it, it's just different by household size.
Right. And I think there were different categories, so it kind of spelled it out. So I'm thinking, well, I'll just go back and look and see what the, what it was back then, which I think was in the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Councilmember McCoy.
Well, if there's not any other discussion, I'd move 2025-79.
Second.
Okay. So, um, the consent item, 9E, has been moved by Councilmember McCoy and seconded by Councilmember Christ. There's no further discussion, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, and that carries unanimously. Now we're on to item 9F, ordinance 2025-80, and that was pulled by Councilmember Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, I just had a couple clarifying questions before we vote on this next week, or in two weeks, I guess. Um, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff, and frankly, to Mayor Peck and my councilmembers, who largely worked on this before I was appointed. Um, just for the public's awareness, this is a $16 million contribution from RTD, right? That's going into this first to main transit station area, which is not a small amount of money. Um, I know there are many people who are frustrated with what we have paid into RTD, but this is actually $16 million coming back to Longmont here for this. Uh, and likewise, for all the work on the Kaufman Street work that's now at least complete in this phase, I know there's a little bit more that's gonna happen with this, but up to this point. So truly thank you to all the staff that worked on that, and to council for all your work on this in the past. This is one of the most consequential projects in downtown in years, if not decades, and I was wondering if you could share a little bit more about the design process for first to main, for the transitation garage, and who's on the design team for this?
Yeah, so Laura can jump in with me. So we have started having conversations about, um, high level on the design piece. Uh, so when we look at that, obviously, there's representatives from the Tebow Group because they own the two parcels on, um, the north and south side of the property that we purchased for the, um, that the city purchased for the transit station, in that, uh, there is a large group of folks that include our planning department, Laura, myself, but Jen's replacing me on that. Um, and then I know they're interacting with Kimberly McKee with the Downtown Development Group. She's been involved in some of the conversations. Who else can we think of? Laura. RTD, sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening.
Mike.
Mike.
Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. Yes, Laura Moody, Development Director. Um, yes, we have been meeting internally as, as, as well as with our external partners. Um, we are meeting with Coburn. They are going to be doing the design. We're also meeting with Tebow Properties, and James Dixon is here from Tebow Properties as well. He's here to answer questions. So, um, yes, we have started, we started with a general charrette-style meeting, and we're now working with getting into more details of what the design will look like and how it will interact. We did meet, yes, with the LDDA staff to see how they would interact with our Downtown Development Guidelines, as well as with OTAC, who is doing the design for the Kaufman Extension, to see how those two development, those two plans would interact.
Gotcha. Thank you. And if people had, if members of the public or if others had suggestions for the design process, how would they best offer that?
Um, I would say email me, or email my Or email my office, and we would get that into the group. Thus far, it's, a lot of it's been really focused on the things you can't see, really with the engineering department in terms of things like, how do we relocate a wastewater line? How do we deal with stormwater? And so it's been a lot of just hardcore engineering because the interplay between the Kaufman Street connecting to Boston is really setting the framework for everything. But I would say, yeah, just send it into our office. You can send it to Jen or myself.
Sure, I had specific, I had specific suggestions on the wastewater treatment pipe pass, but no, just kidding. Thank you, I appreciate that. In the develop, in the development agreement, I saw a couple of different numbers for the amount of parking that's being built. I saw RTD requiring a minimum of 200, I think. And then I think the developer, like the Tebow Development Company wanting 300. What's the, what are we looking at in terms of parking for expectation, just for the public's awareness?
So what I would say is the minimum number is 200 spaces, of which were required by contract to do for RTD. I think it could be upwards of 600 spaces, depending on what we look at, and potentially a little bit more in terms of what we're looking at for that general area. Like council may recall, when they did the steam planning initiative a few years ago, and you look at some of the graphics, it really is about consolidating parking in the area in consolidated parking structures versus having the, just the standard parking that we have in order to maximize the land use in that area.
So you could do more with the rest of the spaces?
Exactly.
And keep the parking focused there?
Exactly.
Yeah, so fair to assume somewhere between 200 and 600 spaces, likely, somewhere in that?
Correct.
Great.
There are three groups of parking. The first is RTD, the 200 that are required by the AGA. The second group is the number of spots that will be utilized by the residential units. And once that is determined, the number of residential units that are going to be built, that, that number will be finalized. And then there will be that third group of parking for the commercial units, as well as any excess for the public.
Thank you. And then, of course, that's vehicle parking. I wanted to ask, I know we're working on a regional bike share situation. I didn't see anything in the very high-level design on like, what, like a bike share station or parking area, and that does take up some space. So I'm just curious, how is that being thought about in the process?
So actually, there is an area, if you look at the design on the Kaufman Street, there's an area west of the parking structure that is not programmed for sort of dead space, for lack of a better word. And I think when we look at bike share, that would be a good location because it is adjacent to the bike path because the bike path has to be actually on the west side as it's connecting in to the Kaufman project. And when we talk about design, there's a lot of moving pieces on that because then we had to get consensus with RTD, BNSF, CDOT, and the city traffic engineers in terms of how we're crossing the rail piece. And so I do think there's some space on the west side.
Great, sounds like a party.
And we are intending to this, for this facility to be truly multimodal. I mean, we are looking at using this as a hub for Ride Longmont, for the microtransit. And so we really are looking at how this can be a true multimodal facility.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Councilmember Christ.
Can you tell me, is there a plan to reclaim the prior transit station further down on Main? By RTD? It's sitting there empty. That's a question I received.
So that is a, I think, a city parking lot. Is Kami here? Did I see Kami? Kami, what are the plans for that? Are they still gonna use it? So we'll need to work with RTD because that is part of that route. So in terms of BRT stations that we've agreed to, there's, there's two in the community. So there is one at First and Main, and then there's a second station that is on North Main, north of the Walmart, in that undeveloped parcel that has been an agreed-upon location for essentially the BRT system. I honestly can't remember whether or not RTD was still going to utilize that area as sort of a midpoint stop or not. So we'll need to follow up with you on that one.
Okay, thank you.
May I please have a motion to approve the item? Councilmember Popkin.
Thank you, I'll motion to approve item 9F.
So it's been moved, so item 9F has been moved by Councilmember Popkin, seconded by Councilmember Yarborough. We have no further discussion, let's go ahead and vote. Okay, and that carries unanimously. So now we are on to our general business item. 12A, an appeal of denial of a variance application by the Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the Board of Adjustments and Appeals regarding setback variances at 1154 Venice Street. In consideration of Resolution 2025-63, a resolution of the Longmont City Council upholding the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission acting as the Board of Adjustments and Appeals to deny the setback variance request for 1154. And it looks like we have a staff presentation, so Phil Taylor?
Good evening. Phil Taylor, Senior Planner, City of Longmont. I am here to provide a brief presentation of the appeal process and the appeal of variance denial at 1154 Venice Street. This appeal follows a decision by the Planning and Zoning Commission acting as the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. The subject property located at 1154 Venice Street, you can see here within aerial, is a corner lot located at the corner of 12th Avenue and Venice Street, and totals approximately .17 acres. The subject property is zoned, single-family residential. The applicant is appealing the Planning and Zoning Commission denial of a variance request heard on September 24th, 2025. The request involved two variances to construct a detached garage. The first variance request was a, to allow a five-foot front setback where 15 feet is required, and a second variance request to allow a five-foot rear setback where six feet is required. You can now see a image of the land survey plot for the subject property. I think this is an important image to show the location of the existing structure. And you can see, this is the existing garage on site. It helps to provide some context of the remaining space that could accommodate an additional structure. You can now see the site plan provided by the applicant with the proposed detached garage shown, showing right here, meeting the requested setbacks of five feet from the northern setback along 12th, and then five feet along the rear setback adjacent to the alley. And here is the formal Planning and Zoning Resolution 2025-11C that did formally deny the variance requests based on the finding that the application did not conform to the applicable requirements of 1502055 and 1502060I of the Longmont Development Code. So you can now see a brief overview of the appeal process. Step one, I'm giving a brief overview of the appeal report, that's happening right now. The applicant will then give a presentation. They are here this evening to answer any questions. Following my presentation and the applicant's presentation, councilmembers are allowed to enter any additional evidence into the record they may find helpful. And then the applicant is allowed to respond to any questions or rebuttal if, if, if they deem necessary. The main questions councilmembers should consider this evening are now seen on the screen. Was P&amp;Z's decision to deny the variance plainly in error? Because the decision was not supported by any competent evidence in the record? Was P&amp;Z's decision to deny the variance plainly in error? Because the decision was plainly inconsistent with the review criteria in Sections 1502055 and 150260I5? And was P&amp;Z's decision to deny the variance plainly in error? Because P&amp;Z exceeded its authority or jurisdiction as contained by code or charter? You can now see the criteria for all application types outlined in 1502055, which are continued here. And then, review criteria specific to variances in Section 1502060I5, seen here, and continued here. And finally, based on the initial staff report and presentation and the additional evidence provided by the applicant for the appeal request, staff believe that councilmembers should uphold the decision from Planning and Zoning Commission, and conclude that all three of these questions can be answered with a no. I know the applicant is here to have a presentation, have been answering any questions. Thank you.
Do we have any questions? Okay, so... Do we have any questions for the applicant? Councilmember Popkin.
For, I just wanted to clarify in process here. So if we had questions for staff or applicant, is that best done now? Or is that done after the applicant's presentation?
So are they gonna come up and present? Okay, so I wasn't sure if they were coming to present or coming to answer questions if we had them. So come on down.
Okay, thanks, I'll hold then.
Yeah, hey there, I'm William Neff. I'm the, my wife and I own the property. We moved in last September. And at the time we moved in, we were aware there was only one car garage. Okay, and at that time, I was only 79 years old. I was still young. And I thought it would not be a problem with the snow and the ice in the winter and so forth. And then over the winter, I developed a heart condition. I turned 80 in March, and then had heart surgery in April. And I was not inclined to move again, simply because there's a sort of what I consider to be irrational thing of having two front yards. Our real front yard, where our front door is, is on Venice Street. And then the side of the house, which is really a side yard, is on 12th Street. But because that's considered a front yard, the setback requirements are much more stringent than it would be otherwise. And, you know, to scientists like me, it doesn't seem rational. Okay, but it is what it is. Now, the, you know, my concern, and one of the questions that often comes up, is was this a self-imposed hardship? Did we just not think this through before we bought the house? And like I said, I was young when we bought it, and now I'm old. And I wanna live a while longer. And just the idea of going out in the ice and the snow in the winter. I have faith in global warming, I mean, it's not a hoax, okay? And maybe it's gonna get warm enough, we don't have snow and ice anymore, okay? But that's sort of beyond the end of my lifetime, if I make it 10 or 15 years more. And so, anyhow, so that, that is the essence of it. Now, we have some flexibility, like there's a five-yard setback we requested to the alley. We could shrink the garage a little bit. I have a small car, fuel-efficient and all that sort of stuff. And so we could shrink it a little bit in that respect. But the side yard, the front yard setback on 12th Street, which isn't really a front yard, is what's really stopping us in this process. And that's where we, I'd like to ask for some relief from the council to accommodate that. This area was all developed in the early 50s, and it's a bit of a hodgepodge. You know, and, you know, there are a lot of things that really don't meet code anymore there. We've done a lot of work on the house, improving the yard. It was, had been abandoned for a year. We've re-landscaped a lot of it. The back, where we want to put the garage, is an eyesore right now with an old raspberry patch with trees growing up from it that have been seeded from the alley behind the, behind the properties. And that would all get cleaned up, re-landscaped, and become much more attractive in the neighborhood. And again, we've tried to make the, the impact of a, you know, a new garage there visually less onerous to our neighbors who we love. We have a great neighborhood, actually, lovely neighbors. And so, anyhow, that's, that's basically my pitch as, you know, an old guy who wants to stay there and doesn't want to move again. After the last move, I felt like if I had another move, I'd die. So I just want to, you know, try and make the rest of my life comfortable. And it's, again, it's a lovely place. We love being in, in Longmont now. I've been in Boulder County since 1970, after I came here after sea duty, and have never left. So it's, we love it here. And Wayne is our, was our contractor with Republic Garages. And they were recommended to us by one of our neighbors just down the alley when they added a one-car garage to the back of their property, which came out really nicely, was very attractive, and fit into the neighborhood very well. And I think the design that has been proposed by Republic, and Wayne can maybe address this, is that the finish on the garage will match the finish on the house, which is sort of a stucco gray type trim. So it'd fit right in. And there's no way we can modify the existing structure without taking down half the house to build a two-car garage there. Again, it's had a series of additions under the back, and wiring is problematic through the house where the wiring comes into the current one-car garage, and there's no way to redo any of that. So, but the idea was to make something that looked attractive in the neighborhood, would fit the character of the neighborhood, and not look like something unusual was being added to the neighborhood that wasn't compatible with the, with our neighbors. And so Wayne, do you want to add anything else to that?
Hello. Wayne Hayfley, contractor. One of the reasons that we're here is because we believe that the, the denial did not take into account some of the criteria, which for us is, is pretty simple. I'd like to show you, unfortunately, I don't know a lot about the technology. Is it, Phil, can you pull up that site plan that you had? So one of the criterias is, you know, unusual circumstances, shape or dimensions. And that's where we fall under. As you can see, the, the house, the lot's got the one crooked side. The house is on there parallel to the crooked side. And so we positioned the garage at such a point, and matter of fact, we went smaller in order to meet that five-foot setback over there, which is your standard setback for a detached garage if it wasn't a side street. And, and so, as you see, we tucked it in close as we could to that corner. And that's where we'd like to go. So it's, it's fairly simple for us that, that this criteria is met by unusual circumstances, the shape of the lot, the dimensions. And, and on top of that, the fact that another criteria is that Bill did not create any of these problems himself, which he did not. He bought it this way.
And then I got old.
So... That's basically it.
Do we have any questions? I know Councilmember Popkin. So I'm gonna actually start with Councilmember Yarborough.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This is very interesting. So granted, you purchased a home with, and you said the, the house had originally a one-car garage. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so you're adding another garage?
Another single-car garage.
Another single-car garage. And where's the current garage?
It's...
You see, oh, I can point?
I got it.
Ah, okay. All right, you see this dimension right here, 14-2? This is the front, so they enter right here off the alley. This is the front, so they enter right here off the alley into this single car. And then they would also enter, the proposal was right here, enter into this one car.
And what's next to the, in that little L-shaped, I'm sorry, I don't know the correct terminology?
No, no, it's all right. That's just simply walkway to get in between the, the existing and the new.
And so the fourteen-point-three by the one-point-eight, what is that piece right there? What's in that structure?
That's a storage area that's attached to the existing garage and house.
It's just a shed.
And so there's nothing you can do with the shed to?
It's an integral part of that, of the garage. It's, you know, finished to match the garage. And it's got interesting wiring going to it through the garage to the shed. And even moving the garage, you know, closer into the, into the yard there would not, you know, would still have a problem with the, you know, the fourteen-foot setback from Twelfth Street for what is considered our, a front yard for us.
So what would happen? What would be your, your alternative if we denied this today? What would you do? I mean, what is, what are your other options?
Move to Costa Rica where it doesn't snow. Otherwise, just grin and bear it and hopefully I don't slip on ice and snow in the winter. I mean, yeah.
Can we show a down view of that, Phil, the, the area right there, the block area right there?
I mean, I can show the original aerial, but that's not probably close enough for your use. We have the survey on the next one.
No, I need that, that aerial. How do you go back to that aerial? Okay. And that's the only aerial? Okay, where's this?
Actually, well, Wayne's looking for that.
Is it okay that, for you guys to look at this? Here's an aerial of the, his house, which is circled. And directly across the street, there's a garage that is coming all the way to the side, exactly what we're asking, right there. Forty-five feet apart.
But is the lot shaped the same way, though?
I can't tell, but the house is on there crooked, just like ours. And, and it's only a corner, just like ours. There's only a corner that we're asking for the five. It's the same thing with this one directly across the street. It's only one corner that's five foot, right off that side street, twelve. I, I don't know how to show it on here, but we did print out an aerial view.
Okay, that's better.
Oh, there you go. Okay. So it is, it's right there. So right here where the mouse is, this is the property that Bill has. And directly right here, that corner right there that their mouse is on, that's the corner that's five foot off the prop line. Same as what we're asking off of Twelfth. That's a garage right there that they go into. So, so we're, you know, it's, it's neighborhood compatibility to a point.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't know if that's five feet or not. I mean, I don't have confirmation. Do we know if that's five feet across the street at twelve oh three?
We do not.
Yeah, we can't confirm that.
I can get that. I mean, we would be very happy to have you say whatever that is, as long as we don't surpass that.
I know what you're saying. I can't, I can't do that.
We could get a survey, you know, to show you, to figure out what that is exactly.
I'm going to.
We could also squeeze the garage a little bit more.
Oh darn it, I accidentally turned you off.
Yeah.
Can you put your thing back on?
I do.
No, go ahead. I was trying to get him ready. I was trying to prep him.
And, you know, pulling in a foot or so on the garage would be feasible because I have a small car. Okay, so if you want that to be, you know, six feet rather than five feet. Yeah. We can make some adjustments like that.
Yeah. Go ahead.
The possibility is we build a carport back there.
Yeah.
And then for storage, put a shed, which I understand from Phil, you can put a hundred and twenty square foot shed anyplace on your property without a building permit. So that would give us some, some storage. Matter of fact, there's one of those sheds on the corner of the alley right behind us that was put there that didn't require permit, and one of the questions that came up in the variance hearing were sightlines. People turning into the alley from Twelfth Street, and they wanted a, like a thirty-foot sightline, okay? But, you know, we can put a shed anyplace, block that sightline, and it's legal. So it's just like one of those sort of funny things with the regulations that you can do all this stuff that doesn't really work for the neighborhood, but it's still legal. And all we're asking for is a little give on the dimensions. You know, we can pull it in from the alley by a foot, so, you know, it's six feet rather than five feet. We can pull it in from Twelfth Street by a foot, so it's six feet rather than five feet. And then there's that, you know, that catch twenty-two with the fact we have two front yards. That creates limitations for us.
And you couldn't put a garage on Venice Street?
It would be extremely difficult.
That's the front yard.
That's the front, that's the other front yard.
Can't, can't put a garage in the front. This is a, the, the, on Twelfth is what they call a side street. Even though they, they have different rules for that. And that, that's what we're having trouble with, is that side street setback.
Right. Also, the utilities all come in the front of the, in the, from Venice Street. And as a matter of fact, we just went through a whole process with Excel that had a leaking gas line on Venice Street. And my wife harassed them until they finally came out. They actually measured. It was at the combustible level, exceeding the combustible limit for natural gas in the water line access in the middle of the street. So they had to come in and dig all that up in the middle of the night and replace, you know, all the piping in, in Venice Street to accommodate that. So, I mean, it's just not feasible to, to block all that utility access from the front.
Yeah, I get it. I understand. I'm just looking at all the options because we have codes in place for a reason. And I know you know that, and I'm being empathetic because guess what? Next year I'm going to be old, too. And so I want to make sure that, I, I, I get it and I understand. But I also want to make sure that we exhaust every option other than changing the code for one person that may end up impacting the whole neighborhood because other people are going to start coming in and appealing as well. And I'm not saying they shouldn't, but I want to make sure that we make the best decision here tonight. For you and for the community as well.
Yeah, I think, you know, there are, you know, the, the whole thing with the, you know, having two front yards is, you know, part of the problem. And just from my perspective, when I came to Boulder in the seventies, I had a, my wife and young son and I had bought a little house on Maplewood Hill on the north side that, and our developers were looking at to redevelop. And I wanted to protect that neighborhood. But it turned out there was no mechanism in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan for amendments. And I worked with Josie Heath at the time, going through the process to build in an amendment process to the Comprehensive Plan to say in fact, no, this isn't perfect, and some things need to be accommodated. And we got that through. So it's like, it's what's reasonable, what's rational. And, you know, what accommodates something that's a bit odd logically.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and move it over to Councilmember Popkin.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Thank you, Bill and Wayne, right? Thank you guys for taking the time, not only for tonight, but for the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting and for, and for kind of trying to follow this process here. Unfortunately for you, our decision is to try to determine whether the Planning and Zoning Commission made an error, not whether we think your specific proposal is optimal or serves your needs. And unfortunately, that kind of puts us in a challenging spot. If, if we're serving in our appellate function appropriately here, not just as a, trying to work with you through kind of figuring out this. And so I guess I had two questions for you. You mentioned repeatedly that you, you unfortunately have two front yards, and that's complicating this. Wouldn't it be true that virtually every single property along Venice Street also has two front yards?
Only if on the corner.
Well, I, I think every property, at least from, for multiple blocks, is on a corner.
There are many corner lots, yeah.
Yes. I'm looking across many, many blocks here, so there are multiple corner lots, and so that does, building on Councilmember Yarborough's point, it does potentially pose a precedent-setting decision here that could complicate things future. The second thing that, you know, I think the Planning and Zoning Commission was thinking about here is whether the variance allows for the least deviation from the standard that will afford relief. And I'm, I'm trying to understand whether what you proposed was the least deviation possible because what I'm hearing from you is that you can make some adjustments. You could shave off this, you could shave off that. And, and I think you're coming at this from trying to be flexible and work with us.
Yeah, yeah. But without, you know, tearing apart the existing house.
Sure.
And it's already been a problem because when, before we could move in, we actually, it was contaminated with asbestos. And we had to do all the asbestos remediation into the house.
No, I, I don't mean to interrupt, Bill, but just for the sake of time, I, I understand that those other challenges that you faced. I've moved into an old house myself, so I know, I know those complicating factors.
If you had a regulation in the fifties that don't put asbestos in houses, yeah. Yeah, but, you know.
Bill, Bill, what I'm trying to wrap my head around is you're offering to kind of pull down a few feet here and there to try to work with us on this. That to me feels like what the variance would have been intended to do in the first place. And this is unfortunately probably not the optimal time in the process to actually do that. And I hate to say like, process is kind of going to be the, the pushback here, but we do have an appellate function for a reason, and Planning and Zoning Commission does have a decision-making process for a reason, too. So I, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand, is, is that true when you say you could shave this down in a few areas?
A foot here or there, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I have a small car, so. I just want someplace to put it and so it's not covered with ice and snow in the winter.
Sure, I understand that. All right, thank you for those clarifications.
Oh. Did you want, okay, so do we have any other? Okay, so now are we ready to decide on this? Okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
If, if we took a foot off one way, the other way, are we allowed to re-present this?
I think would it go back to P and Z?
We could remand it.
We could remand it, okay.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Jeremy Terrell, Assistant City Attorney. Councilmember Rodriguez is correct. One of the options before council tonight is to remand the application back to Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as the Board of Appeals and Adjustment to consider any modifications with direction. So if council wanted to get, send it back to PZ to have them consider, you know, a revised proposal from the applicant, that is an option for council. Otherwise, if, if council would deny the variance, that two-year limitation on coming back with a new application variance would kick in. So just like with any land development application, if there's a denial, there's a two-year bar from resubmitting the same application.
Okay, so then it really comes back to the applicant. Do they want to kind of delay and have the opportunity to, to revise?
So we'd have to do it within two years or wait two years?
No, no, it's only if there's a denial. So if, if you were to withdraw your application or ask council to remand it to Planning and Zoning Commission for you to make modifications, you can go right back to Development Review Staff, work with them on re-proposing a new application that goes before PZ. Or you have, can council make a decision tonight and council could approve it, they could modify it with conditions, or they could deny it, and then dials that two-year limits.
Yeah, I guess my concern is the, the zoning board, the variance board, seemed intent with not even considering the application. They were looking for a way just to deny it, and they don't typically, from what I understand, they don't typically approve variances. They're very reluctant to, and the discussion that I heard at the variance board was they were looking for all sorts of ways, quoting all sorts of, you know, paragraph fifteen point oh five six dash A to in fact turn it down. And they just didn't want to bend the rules at all. Or allow any, any variation based upon the extenuating circumstances that we face with an oddly shaped lot, something that was laid out in the nineteen fifties by a surveyor that maybe was a little sloppy about stuff. And, you know, it could have been done differently, you know, seventy years ago, but it is what it is now, and we're trying to live with that.
I mean, and I think what we're proposed with tonight are three very direct questions of, you know, if yes, it met this, you know, the decision was based on, on competent evidence, on convincing evidence that it upheld the charter and the code. So I mean, ours is very black and white, so, you know, I, I don't, you know, if you feel like you can go back and do a revision that might appeal to the board, to the board, to the P and Z group that would allow, then, you know, maybe you might want to withhold or withdraw it for now. Otherwise, we'll, we'll vote on this tonight, and with the risk of it being denied.
Mayor Protam, I didn't speak. It's only a one-year bar, not a term.
Okay.
I'm, I'm coming back from vacation.
Okay, no, you're good, you're good, you're good.
But thank you, Phil.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Did I hear you right when you said that they could actually approve with modifications?
Yes, so Mayor, Mayor Protam and Council, that is among the options before council tonight. If council found that P and Z's decision was an error based on one of those three questions, council could either approve the variance outright as requested by the applicant, they could approve with conditions, or they could find that the P and Z decision, the applicant did not meet his burden to prove the P and D's, P and Z decision wrong based on those three questions and deny the variance or uphold the denial. And then the fourth option is always to remand.
So the shape of this lot does not qualify as unusual circumstances, the, the area that we have left to build with?
It's not, yeah. Okay, I'm going to pass it over to Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. So it does not sound like you are necessarily prepared to provide us a specific site plan right now?
No.
You can just generally say a foot here or there?
I could say that we'll change the setback on Twelfth Street to six feet from five, and from the alley from five feet to six. I know that will work there.
No, 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 he's, you, you want to say, take off a foot, make it seventeen, and, and a foot that way.
Yeah, so take off a foot.
Both, both ways.
From the alley.
Away from the alley and away from the side street.
So the, the specific, as I believe Councilmember Popkin already illustrated, was that the amount of variance was not the least amount of variance that could be considered. And we don't know if that's the case, even with just this anecdotal one foot here, one foot there testimony. I would prefer, I mean, the city council has historically not necessarily always followed this procedure correctly. I've always tried to suggest that they do in, in my experience on city council. Because there, there's nothing that would make us overturn that decision based on strictly the procedure. There isn't. The Planning and Zoning acted within their jurisdiction. They acted with all information available within the record. And they did nothing that was, I would say, outside of their procedures as well. So, you know, considering that, I can't necessarily vote for this ordinance, but again, that's not technically what city council's precedent has been. not technically what city council's precedent has been historically. So I'm not going to necessarily try to ring my fellow council members into position on this, but, so that was why I was kind of leaning towards giving some more time to the applicant through the remanding process, or possibly the withdrawal process, as to not make them wait a year if they do come up with something that could be amenable, to which technically, yes, is Planning and Zoning, but also the Master Board of Appeals, which is slightly different, as they sit with a five-member board instead of a seven-member board. Another thing to remember about that process as well. So with that, I'll let other council members make comments.
Okay. Councilmember Popkin.
Yeah, I'll wade into the discussion now. I think the applicants, or the appellate's best option here is to probably withdraw if they want to preserve this. I agree with Councilmember Rodriguez. I watched the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing on this. They voted 5-0. They did not err in any way. I think they felt a variance is here to provide for exceptions when there's a situation of undue hardship or practical difficulties that are particularly special circumstances, and that the variance is the least, what's the word, the least deviation from the standard possible to afford relief. I understand that this will make your life easier, and I understand that's why you're bringing this forward, and so I'm not without empathy here. But we're here in an appellate body trying to decide whether Planning and Zoning messed up. And I can say very confidently that it did not. And, you know, to their credit, so to their credit, like, we have to, like, I'm not trying to anchor this procedure. We have rules for a reason, and they followed them and respected them, and I want to respect that. You know, there are a couple comments that were made during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that I think are telling that this would be a nice-to-have, not a must-have situation. And I think Mr. Neff, you had mentioned during the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing that, or the Board of Adjustment Appeals, excuse me, that, you know, you wanted to have a workbench out there, and that that was going to make, like, be a nice addition there. That doesn't scream to me like this is the least space possible. You mentioned multiple times, you have flexibility in positioning the garage and making it smaller. Again, Planning and Zoning followed their procedure. This was not kind of the least deviation possible, and I don't see a particular special circumstance here that would make us decide that we have to overturn Planning and Zoning's decision.
Yeah, I guess the problem is that you're requiring us to have two front yards, whereas most houses only have one front yard. And that is what creates-
You purchased the two front yards, sir.
Pardon me?
You purchased the two front yards.
I didn't know I was purchasing two front yards, because that wasn't, not in the disclosure by the seller. And-
I think-
That's a pretty obscure requirement.
I understand that, Mr. Neff.
I've never seen that, you know, anyplace else in the world, and I've been around for a while. And, you know, that's the conundrum here, is having two front yards is what's limiting us. And I don't have two front yards. I have one front yard and a side yard, which is along the street.
I appreciate that. I understand that that is-
Totally irrational.
That is an aspect of your property. I think if I'm looking at the map here of Old Town, in particular Historic East Side, there are probably hundreds, if not thousands, of properties that have that dynamic. And so my strong suggestion, I mean, I don't see a reason to disagree with Planning and Zoning here. I don't think that they've missed something in procedure. So my strong suggestion out of empathy here is that if you would like to preserve your option to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission with an updated proposal-
Revision, yeah.
Is that you withdraw your request now. That would be my strong suggestion. You do not have to follow that.
I know, yeah, but it sounds like you're not going to vote to over-
I don't, my perspective on this, for council's understanding, is that Planning and Zoning did not make any errors in their decision, and they followed the appropriate application of their rules. Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess we'll make the decision just to withdraw it for now.
Withdraw, okay.
And, you know.
And then just kind of start back the process again. That way you do not have to wait a year. So do we have to have any kind of formal, or can they just withdraw? Okay. So we'll go ahead and accept or withdraw?
Okay, well, yeah.
Good luck.
It's frustrating at times, because, you know, when we were doing the stuff with the comp plan back in the 70s, they said, oh, that can't happen, because there's no method to amend it. And so a process was set up to amend it. And so maybe we need to, you guys need to have a process by which you can amend having two side yards.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Thank you for that. Good luck.
Yeah, well, that's what they said back then, too, so. But eventually, we got a change, so. Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh, good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're moving on to general business item 12B, a review of the application for demolition of 824 Kimbark Street pursuant to section 2.56.180.e. And that's all I have. And then, yes. So, and this is going to be presented by Jennifer Hewitt Apperson. Sorry, I'm blind. Hello again, Jennifer Hewitt Apperson, Principal Planner, Planning and Development Department. This is a unique case coming before you. And if either of our city attorneys would like to jump in at any point, feel free.
Please.
So this is a demolition review of 824 Kimbark Street pursuant to section 2.56.180, which provides for historic preservation review of demolition permits for properties that are more than 50 years old and located in the original townsite Square Mile, which this property is. So the owners of 824 Kimbark Street are seeking to demolish the existing home and detached garage, citing structural issues with the foundation that are not economically feasible to repair. As I mentioned, because the structure is more than 50 years old and located in the original townsite, this revision, this demolition must be reviewed pursuant to 2.56.180e. The Longmont Historic Preservation Commission referred this proposed demolition to city council for review at their October 8 meeting, finding that there was reason to believe that the property could be eligible for local historic landmark designation without the owner's consent. So the question for city council this evening is whether you believe the subject property could be eligible for historic landmark designation without the owner's consent pursuant to the criteria established in section 2.56.050. If you do not, then the property may be demolished. If you do make this determination, the demolition permit would be stayed while options are discussed and considered. And so I will discuss the specifics of this property and the criteria for consideration this evening. So just for some context, the subject property is located on the east side of Kimbark Street, directly across the street from the school district building on Ninth and Main. It is designated, it is zone mixed-use downtown, though it is not located within areas of either the LDDA or Historic East Side Neighborhood Association. So it's kind of in a weird little area. So this property consists of 10,000-square-foot lot with a primary house that's a bit over 1,000 square feet, and a 280-square-foot detached garage. While the property is located within the original townsite subdivision, it is not a designated landmark. So again, more context, history of the property. This house was built in 1902 in the late Victorian style. There was an addition in 1924, and the garage was added in 1937. The last alteration to the exterior home that has been documented was the addition of a picture window on the front of the house in 1958. The cultural resource survey for this property, which is included as attachment 3, noted that this home does retain a high level of architectural integrity, even with these additions over the years. So the applicant is seeking to demolish the property due to its poor condition, and more particularly, the poor condition of the foundation. He states that the cost to repair the foundation makes rehabilitation of the house economically So the applicant did submit a structural engineer's report regarding the condition of the foundation. This report is included as attachment 5 in your packet, and it did note there are three sections of the foundation on the house representing different times of when the property was built. And it did notice, note that there were condition issues with all three sections. So just a little bit about cultural resource surveys. Cultural resource surveys are tools that document the history of a property and typically address dates of construction, design materials, and documented alterations over the years, as well as any unique features of the property. This documentation is done with research through public records and other various sources, including the Longmont Library and, or Longmont Museum and their documentation. These surveys also identify who the property was associated with, including architects, builders, and any notable historic figures, as well as potential eligibility for local, state, or national landmark recognition. So a cultural resource survey was completed for this property in 2008 as part of a larger community effort in the Historic East Side to survey the properties within that neighborhood. That survey noted that this property would meet the lower threshold for local landmark designation with the owner's consent, but it would not meet the higher standard of national, for National Register listing. It did not contemplate designation without the owner's consent, so, but you can make some inferences from the National Register finding. So the Historic Preservation Commission considered this proposed demolition at their September 4 meeting, and then continued it to the October 8 meeting based on additional information requested from the applicant. So the question before the commission was the same as the question that's before council this evening, whether there is reasonable cause to believe that 824 Kimbark Street is eligible for landmark designation without the owner's consent. And ultimately, they referred the requested demolition to city council for consideration to make this determination. So as noted previously, the question before council tonight is whether there is cause to believe that this property may be eligible for designation without the owner's consent. If it does not believe that is eligible, then the demolition permit may be issued. If it does, then the matter would be referred back to staff to initiate the process for designation without the owner's consent. There are also a couple of other options described in the code as well. So over the next few slides, I will review the criteria for designation without the owner's consent as it is related, as related to the proposed demolition, subject to the section of code. So the criteria for designation without the owner's consent are established in section 2.56.050c. All five of the following criteria must be met in order to designate a property as a landmark. I will note that this section does also contain a petition requirement. However, that particular criterion is not applicable to demolition reviews per 2.56.180. So subsection A of 2.56.050 contains the criteria for designation with the owner's consent. Only one of these criteria must be met for a property to be eligible to designate their property, so long as it is at least 50 years old, or is determined to have extraordinary historic significance. The subject property does meet four of the criteria established in that section of the code. Section 2.56.020 defines extraordinary historic significance to mean, one, such unusual or uncommon significance that the structure's potential demolition or alteration would diminish the character and sense of place in the neighborhood, or superior outstanding examples of architectural, social, geographic, or geographic historic significance of the criteria listed above. So staff is not of the opinion that this criterion is satisfied, given the statements in the cultural resource survey and the analysis provided on pages seven and eight of the council communication. It should be noted that Historic Preservation Commission disagreed with staff's assessment and did find that 824 Kimbark had extraordinary historic significance on the basis that demolition of the property, quote, "would diminish the character and sense of place in the neighborhood." So the third criteria is whether the condition prevents the owner from, quote, "reasonably preserving the structure." The applicant has submitted documentation that's included as an attachment in the council communication, that comprehensive foundation repair would cost upwards of $250,000. In terms of whether the designation would create hardship, the applicant purchased the property in December of 2004 for $400,000, according to the Boulder County Assessor records. The estimated $250,000 repair cost that the applicant provided for complete foundation repair does represent more than 60% of this purchase price. Sorry, my voice was about to go out. So the final criterion to consider is whether the promotion of public interest by designating the property as a landmark outweighs any diminution of market value. So one consideration is that historic neighborhoods are lost one property at a time. 824 Kimbark Street is part of the original Square Mile town of Longmont, but it is not part of either the National, the Historic East Side National Register District, nor the Downtown National Register District. While this property would be considered a contributing structure if it were in one of these historic districts, the question is whether or not it meets that higher bar for designation without the owner's consent. So the applicant does intend to construct a single-family home with an accessory dwelling unit on the property, which would incrementally add to the city's housing supply. With regard to the diminution of value, the cited foundation repair costs, when combined with the purchase price of the property, do exceed comparable properties currently on the market in the Historic East Side, based on the MLS and Redfin and Zillow. So staff's recommendation has not changed since the October 8 Historic Preservation Commission. It is recommended that city council approve the demolition request on the basis that there is not reasonable cause to believe that the property is eligible for landmark designation without the owner's consent. So with that, I will turn it over to the applicant's representative to discuss their take on everything. You can either just scroll or press the arrow.
Press the arrow, okay, thank you. Mayor Protem, members of council, my name is Scott Dunn, 401 Main Street, on behalf of the applicant, 824 Kimbark. I would like to introduce their, just holding four of them, waving their hands, to say they're four local folks here in Longmont. They purchased this property with the, that's, fair to say, somewhat of a distressed property with the goal to build a new, a new building on it with an ADU, both as investment and to serve the housing needs in Longmont. I'm not going to, I'm trying not to repeat too much of what staff said. Again, she said it's over there on Kimbark, right behind Old Main Street School. So I'm just going to go highlight a little bit on some of the review criteria and, you know, point out a few more things related to the review criteria, and submit the council should find that there's no reason to believe the property is eligible for designation as a landmark without the consent of the owner for such designation. As staff pointed out, and wanted to remind, that the, under the criteria, the designation of landmark without the consent of the owner requires satisfaction of all of the following criteria, as provided in 2.56.050(c)(2) through (c)(6). And we would submit that none of those have been met. As staff discussed, the first criteria is, does the proposed landmark have extraordinary significance? And again, historic significance. We would submit, when you're talking about designating a landmark without the owner's consent, you know, there's a reason that it has to be extraordinary historic significance. And as noted, the- And as noted, the cultural resource survey specifically found that it didn't meet the threshold either for National Register of Historic Places, or State Register of Historic Properties. Yet it was, if you review in the staff report, I think one of the things that was discussed before was related to the neighborhood. If you go down and it's, and you see it in the staff report, if you go down on this block on that east side of Kembarck, running alongside where the Main Street School is, the structure right next door to this, which is the Kembarck Inn, which is a large brick building, was built in 1999. The property on the corner was built in 1994. As noted in the staff report, the property two to the north was significantly altered. If you look at a picture of it, it, I think a lot of it's been altered. The property two to the south, just to the south of the Kembarck Inn, is a 1970's style brick apartment building. So, we would submit that this, this block particularly is a variety of things that are there. And there has been numerous, as we all know on Kembarck Street, a variety of housing types where you have houses, then you have apartments, you have things that were new, and that's certainly true of this block. So, to say that the neighborhood is like it was back, that, that's certainly not the case now. The second criteria, not shown to the proposed landmark as assessed by a licensed professional engineer, prevents the owner from reasonably preserving it. As noted in the staff report, you can see there was an extensive report prepared by a licensed professional engineer, Sherry Nichols with Level Engineering. And her findings included that all three sections of the foundation were in poor condition. And she specifically concluded, and this was again, licensed professional engineer, that the cost to improve this foundation to acceptable structural standards is cost prohibitive, and would still leave this foundation in a repaired but not level state. I noted in the, excuse me, oops, that in the staff report, they highlighted a few other comments from Ms. Nichols that included that the, the floors are all out of level, up to three inches in some parts. There's cracks in the walls, some of which are leaning, appear to be missing supports. There's, there's a report about the chimney having no lower level support. Given the, the message in the, the findings in this report, it's, we submit very clear that the, that the owner can't preserve this property. And actually, it's arguable as to whether it'd be responsible to even have anybody living there with some of the things that are found in this, this report under its current condition. C5 has not shown that the designation of the proposed landmark would create a hardship under the criteria of Section 256.150(a), and has staff, where it defines an economic hardship. Would a designation result in a substantial economic burden to the owner? And as you note, the, there was a market value of 465. The, there is a bid or from a local construction company of 250,000 plus, which represents over 50% of the value of the property. And we'll note that it's not even easy to bid for these kind of properties. That's the reason we say 250 plus, because these, these kinds of properties, given the uncertainty for trying to repair a foundation on a property like this, that's, that's on the low side. And we'll note that, and it was pointed out in the staff report, that, that staff did go to City of Longmont Building Services, who advised that the cited costs were not out of line for the top of the work, type of the work proposed. We would also submit that the, that this process continues to have a significant economic effect on the owner of carrying costs. The, go to the next slide. We note that the, and if you look at the record of the Historic Preservation Commission, there was some discussion related to the work. And it was, I would, it was an unusual discussion, there was a lot of things brought in that weren't, that were not submitted in the packet, that were not, you know, either written bids or written reports. It was largely secondhand information from certain commission members, saying that they had talked to somebody and they thought they could do it for this, and that that was, to some extent, well, apparently, it wasn't totally clear, but apparently was relied on by the commission. The, all we would say is that the, the information provided by the applicant was run by the Building Services Department of City of Longmont, who confirmed their agreement. Actually, I thought it was, it was actually, if you look in the minutes of the meeting, there was one of the commissioners that said they thought it was clear that they didn't meet the criteria, but was passing it along anyway. So, that was an interesting comment, to say the least. So, we would submit that with the major foundation failure confirmed by Level Engineering, but confirmed by city building official, that they are reasonable. But the, the planning staff recommending the feasibility of rehabilitation, that it's clear that the criteria have not been met, when, again, not only not all of them, but of any of them. I think we would also submit that it wasn't discussed in the staff report, but I think it's arguable as to whether this property is potentially exempt from historic preservation, if the structure cannot be rehabilitated or reused on-site to provide any reasonable use. I quote from the, the construction estimate, "Making this foundation safe with our placement would likely be more than $250,000. Cost to improve is to acceptable standards, is cost prohibited." And what's, the reality of this situation is, given that the nature of the problems with the foundation that are very, that are apparent from looking at the engineer report, it's simply, for the value of this property, it's not practical to, to repair it. I mean, the, so what you're left with is, if this was designated as a landmark, you'd have a property that would continue to be a prob, property with a lot of significant foundation problems, that would probably continue to deteriorate until it became uninhabitable, because it's not practical to refurbish this as an historic property. So, let me see. And then, just a little bit of background, over the course of this, our clients have tried to work with staff, and they've, they've worked very well with staff. They changed their plans to adapt to what the staff was saying that they wanted here, which was a infill project where they could have an ADU. And, again, key findings, structures unsafe, rehabilitation cost exceeds feasible thresholds, confirmed by Longmont Building Service. City staff has recommended demolition, and it's not financially feasible, or quote, supported. So we ask that you approve the demolition and find that, that all the criteria have not been met. Thank you.
Okay, and do we have any questions from council? Councilmember Rodriguez.
Sorry, not to interrupt.
We have to hold a public hearing.
Oh, yeah. Well, no, it just hit me to it.
So, when questions are resolved, open the public hearing. So, just going what's off my list here. So, before we go on to public hearing, does anyone have any questions? Okay, so now we're gonna move on to public hearing. I will, oh, did you, okay. Okay, okay. Okay, so I would let, now like to open the public hearing on the review of the application for demolition of 824 Kembarck Street pursuant to Section 2.56.180e. Is there anyone in the, because there's, there was nobody who signed up, but if there's anyone in the chamber who would like to speak on this issue? Okay, so I will now close the public hearing. So may I have a motion to direct staff? Or would there, either way?
We'll get there.
We'll get there, we'll, so we can move it and then have discussion.
Sure.
Okay. So, does anyone want to move it? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So first of all, I'm gonna start with some comments before I make any motions. So, starting out with the definition of extraordinary, right? I, I think that's where it becomes problematic, right? We don't have any evidence in our packet that shows that it's extraordinary as compared to just being one of a great number of things, which does not, to my understanding, meet the definition of extraordinary. As looking at that home, and having been a real estate appraiser for many years, retired real estate appraiser now, the few things that are unique to that late Victorian area, era property can easily be replicated, such as the wood shingle in the upper portion of the facade, not, not the roof, obviously, but it's like a decorative aspect to the late Victorian era. Otherwise, it's generally a fairly common house, design-wise, as we've seen, as was in the packet, in the Historic East Side, as well as the Historic West Side, as far as the late Victorian era. And I think that if you're going to do anything designation-wise without owner's consent, I think there needs to be a clear differentiation, not marginal differentiation, in the design standards and, and the, the standards that were laid out for us on how to, I guess, accurately determine whether it meets the criterion or not. I think that maybe there's, like, obviously, based on Historic Preservation Commission minutes and meeting, there is an argument that can be made, but I think it's marginal at best. And I think that the passion that the Historic Preservation Commission shows for the preservation of properties is noble, right? And I think most homeowners would tell you that a lot of things they do to their homes don't necessarily have the return on investment. I'll give an easy example that almost everybody will understand, is finishing a basement. Finishing a basement generally costs way more to do than you get at it if you sold the house, with the difference of a finished basement and unfinished basement. You have to put way more money into that basement than what it will actually be worth if you resell the home. And that's the return of, you know, return on investment, right? And so, talking about financially feasible and labor of love are two different things. And with his, you know, older properties, historic homes, even properties are not particularly old, like, I technically live in a home that's over 50 years old, and it was built in the 70s, so, just, if we're talking about the 50-year litmus test here. So, and believing me, anything that I do to that house is really just a labor of love. It will not get that return on investment, because it's, you know, a Southmore Park split-level, it's not like the best property ever, but it's, it's mine, so it's nice. So I just wanna note that, I think it's very serious, it's one thing for a commission to refer to us something to be designated without owner's consent, it's a whole different thing for us to actually make that decision without the owner's consent. And so I, I do not think that there are enough significant items of interest in this particular case to make that kind of finding. So I will move that we do not designate without the owner's consent, which is the real question in front of us, not necessarily the, the demolition as it says.
Second.
Okay. So the motion has been made by Councilmember Rodriguez, seconded by Councilmember Yarborough, I heard her first. Okay, now do we have another discussion? Councilmember Popkin.
Surprisingly, we have discussion. I appreciate Councilmember Rodriguez's comments there. I wanted to also note, note a couple things. First, thank you to the staff for the hard work on this, this very lengthy packet. Thank you, Jennifer, for shepherding this through. I also just want to echo Councilmember Rodriguez's notes on the Historic Preservation Commission's review. We do, we do have this body for a reason, and their recommendation to council is important. It's important that we have, you know, regardless of the decision tonight, it's important to scrutinize these types of, of decisions and kind of redevelopment situations that could diminish our community's history and character. And I think taking a moment to actually reflect on that is an important part of the process here. That doesn't inherently mean I agree that it has extraordinary historic significance, but I did want to clarify a few things on that, since that seems to be the, the crux of the Historic Preservation Committee's argument here. So I guess, question for Jennifer on this. I heard from the applicant that there were materials that were not formally introduced into the record. Could you shed a little bit more light on that, to the extent possible, from the commission's discussions, since I think Mayor Peck is normally the liaison there?
Yes, Mayor Peck is normally the liaison. So one of our commissioners, as Mr. Dunn indicated, and is noted in the minutes, one of our commissioners did speak to some outside engineers to get their opinion on, on what could potentially be done. This was outside of the staff's package that was presented in term, for consideration at the public hearing. Jeremy, would you like to weigh in? So, so basically, it was, the information he presented was not part of the package, it was not presented ahead of the meeting, so.
Did staff at any point review information that, that member of the commission had introduced?
No.
Thank you. In, in addition, I think I read in the minutes from that meeting that an updated cultural survey was forthcoming, is that accurate? And if so, what's the current timing of that for the Historic East Side? I thought there was, there were one or two public comments that alluded to something there, and I just wanted to make sure I was not missing something.
No, I, this, this neighborhood, Historic East Side, has pretty comprehensively been surveyed. There are, so we do have an interactive map on our website that has links to the existing surveys. There are some gaps that we found that are, that are on that map. So, the, I believe the update you're referring to is getting that map updated. We did find the, the missing surveys, and it's a matter of, of time to get them uploaded appropriately. So, in terms of updating the surveys, for East Side, it's pretty, it's been comprehensively surveyed, and I don't know that there's any need to re-survey any properties in the East Side.
Okay, thank you. And then, you mentioned in your presentation, Jennifer, that there's, that part of the, there's, there's like a part of the Historic East Side that is designated as, what is it, nationally significant place? What's the, what's that designation, and what's the downtown one you referred to?
It's referred to as a National Register Historic District. So, it's a smaller, in this case, it, it is a smaller part of the district. So there are three National Register Historic Districts in, in the city of Longmont, Historic East Side, Historic West Side, and Downtown. None of those include this property.
What's the boundary for the Historic East Side one?
Oh, gosh. One moment, please.
To the square foot, please. No, I'm just kidding.
One moment, please.
No, just the streets would be great.
I should have this memorized, but I do not.
It's okay, you're not on the clock here.
Sorry, just have to get my interactive map going here.
And I guess where I'm going, I just want to know, like, is this a, directly a budding net? Is it directly adjacent? It's still outside of it, but I just want to respect, like, maybe that spirit, if, if that's the case.
Sure.
Just understand what we're working with.
Let me see if I can get my map to work. It's not adjacent to it, so, oh, come on, map. All right, so roughly, the, it's, it's actually not even really close to it. So the districts of the National Register District roughly go from Long's Peak to Fifth It includes the properties that are on the east side of Emory Street. It kind of does a little zigzag down, where it goes over to Collier Street and down to Fourth.
So the main district is all south of Long's Peak?
It's all south of Long's Peak.
So this property is at, is one and a half blocks north?
Correct.
Of that?
Not even close to adjacent.
Appreciate that clarification. And then you mentioned that there was a downtown historic district. Is that further south?
Further south. It, it runs from Fifth Avenue down just south of Third Avenue.
Gotcha.
And, and picks up properties on Kembarck, as well as along Kaufman.
Thank you, that's very helpful. It's the, one question for the applicant, while you're sitting in the front row there.
The client, yes.
I think, I mean, the client can speak up if they, if they want to add anything. Just curious, in, in the, in, for your client, in the applicant- Just curious, in the, for your client, in the applicant's intention here with the redevelopment proposal, like, is this, I think you mentioned this would be a single-family plus an ADU-type situation. Like, how does the applicant think about, or how do your clients think about kind of the spirit of the architectural or cultural significance of the Historic East Side overall?
Did you want to chime in on that, as far as, I don't, I didn't bring any pretty pictures, but...
Except ugly pictures, too.
You can...
And I will note that a couple of the applicant's preliminary concepts are included in the package.
Okay, yeah, I remember that.
Hi, I'm John Larkin. I represent our group, and we do want to make it fit. We want it to be appropriate. I built one a block over from there on Emery, almost directly across that a few years ago. And we ended up taking that house down because it wasn't feasible either. And we ended up making it look exactly as the original design, and it came out so nice it was perfect. But we did use a lot of the architectural features and stuff on it to make sure it fit. And that's our intent. I mean, our original intent was to do multifamily. And we worked with several people on planning before we even purchased the property to look at doing multifamily. We started with eight townhome units that had a rental on the bottom floor. We squeezed it down to five because we thought it would be, it would meet the criteria in the zoning better. And then after we purchased the property and we started the process, we did a feasibility study with an architect and with the city and everybody else. And then we went back to planning, and we ran into a lot of hurdles. And most of them were financial hurdles. Paying extra, we had to do sewer and water taps for every single unit, which added ridiculous amounts of money, and then the affordable aspect of it, and some other things. So we decided just to step back.
Sure.
And look at putting a proper house there. It's a nice big lot.
Yeah.
And we put a proper house and an ADU, and it'll fit the neighborhood, and we'll make sure it fits really well. It'll be bigger than what's currently there, but we want to make sure it makes sense. So, yeah, our intent is to make it fit with the neighborhood.
I appreciate that, John.
Yeah, we have a couple of pictures on there, so...
Yeah, I think I recall that. I just wanted to ask for public's awareness. I guess if my fellow councilmembers are open to it, and if you are, John, you know, I would be curious if you'd be open to a conditional approval here that, where the applicant integrates architecturally significant details into the, to be demolished property, not much more specific than that, give you the flexibility. It sounds like that's already the spirit of what you're trying to do, so I just wanted to make sure that wouldn't be overly constraining, but I think that would also reflect the spirit of maybe some of the concerns coming from the Historic Preservation Committee, without tying you down to, like, being in an overly restrictive manner.
What do you guys think? Do you think that that makes sense? Okay, we could do that.
Okay, appreciate that, if my fellow councilmembers are amenable to that consideration. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. Councilmember Christ.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So my question is for Ms. Hewitt Aperson. I'm wondering, it was, made a lot of sense to review before demolition these properties, but it seems like this has really delayed the process and added up costs for the owners. And I'm wondering if there's a way to do that earlier in the process, so it doesn't drive up the cost of development.
So, the property owner was advised, going back as early as November of last year, I do have notes from a conversation regarding this property. They were advised that demolition of this property on Kembarque Street would require review of the Historic Preservation Commission because of its age and location. When there was a pre-application, there was a pre-application meeting held with the Development Review Committee, which really looks at a very comprehensive approach of what it's going to take, tap fees, access, et cetera, subdivision specifics. I was part of that review committee and did include information that it needed to get reviewed by Historic Preservation Commission per the demolition code. So, the information has been out there, but it, you know, the time to get on the Historic Preservation Commission agenda, ensure that notice is made, you know, it's much like getting things on his, on the city council agenda. There is a process. We do have notification requirements as well. So, you know, I think we did, we went as fast as we possibly could. But that said, you know, there's always room for improvement, but at the same point, you know, this was, I know staff did what was possible.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. This is, I think, the first demolition since we passed that ordinance. So, but we also often get comments that the process through the city is a little onerous in terms of, you know, more costly and takes time and what have you. And I'm just wondering if you have any insights as to, you know, if you're even considering demolition, should you just start there, so that as they're working on the other elements of the process, that that's already getting added to the agenda?
From my perspective, I advised early on, before the property was purchased, that it would need to go through Historic Preservation Review. So the information is out there. When the pre-application, when the formal pre-application meeting was done, that information and the process was laid out. You know, the pre-application meetings that we hold with the DRC and potential applicants, they are very multidisciplinary, and they lay out everything that needs to be considered, because it's not just planning, it's not just zoning. It really does get into the utility question, as well as the, you know, it gets into the weeds and really lays out what is going to need to be done. When that happens in the process, you know, when that pre-application meeting is done, staff doesn't have a ton of control over it, but, you know, we do always encourage, at least I always encourage, potential applicants to use the pre-application meeting process as part of their due diligence.
Yeah, and I, you know, I recognize this is the first one we've had, but just wonder, looking backwards, if you have any insights? And, just to make it smoother going forward, because we always get that question and comment.
If I could jump in, I think there's an operational conundrum, and a policy conundrum, and like, a case like this, you all are touching on it, in that it was pushed to council that says it could be considered for designation without the owner's consent, but there was no rationale to you as to why they think it could be considered, and are you meeting the points? And I think if you're looking at time, in terms of managing that operational and policy conundrum that we get into, because that was my first question when I saw it on the agenda, is what's the rationale for this moving to council? And the answer was, there's not really one. They just said it could be. Council could look at requiring rationale to be part of, when they push it to you, as to why they think it meets all of the criteria that you pointed, that you pointed out, that could streamline the process a little bit. But that was the one piece that I saw in this, that I think that's ultimately a policy decision in the council, but the council could say, if you're going to do this, part of your recommendation needs to be, this is why we think it needs to be considered, because I think you all were digging into that. And unfortunately, staff was having to fill gaps, of which it's not staff's position, it's the board's position, and so we're not privy to that rationale.
Yeah, it did seem like, according, according to some of the questions that Councilor Popkin was asking, that you already have a great survey as to which houses might need a review like this.
Sure. So, part of, you know, the rationale for doing the Historic East Side surveys, now this has been, this is an effort that probably goes back more than 20 years, and it was initiated by the Historic East Side Neighborhood Association. And their rationale was to document, you know, their rationale from what has been told to me by their representatives, was to document as many properties as they could in the neighborhood so, to make it easy for property owners to seek landmark status if they wanted to. And it also gives, from a data standpoint, it's a great tool that tells a good story about the development of the city and such. So, the survey, the historic survey, when I say it probably, it doesn't need to be updated, even though it's from 2008, the history of the property doesn't change. There may have been some additions or alterations since it was done, but those are easy enough to find. But in terms of the history of the property up until the time of the survey, that doesn't change. You know, it's always going to be built in, in this case, 1902, and it's always going to be associated with certain owners, so...
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you. I'm just thinking, we're, you know, we're trying to fill that attainable housing area and controlling costs as part of keeping the price down. So, thank you for your insights.
Councilmember Yarborough.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just, I'm glad that you brought that up about looking at the packet and like, what's the rationale, because for someone who's not really privy to the historical, everything, reading that packet, I'll tell you what, some of our meetings, we need to have our own YouTube channel show or something, because that was juicy. I'm just saying, I was like, oh my goodness, the drama at these meetings. Yeah, we need to have our own show. Anyway, I was, you know, I don't understand, I don't have, like, all of the knowledge, and I'm like, for me to understand if the house hadn't been designated as a historical house, and they have proof that is damaged, the foundation is damaged or damaging, but yet the historical preservation are saying, well, we can, without the consent of the owners of the property who paid the amount that they paid, can come in and designate it. I'm just like, wait, what? You know, and I get that you, you know, it's just, I didn't understand when they had proof, and then I know they had some, a friend of a friend, you know, come in and say, or a friend to say, well, you can get it cheaper to repair than what the cost that you were saying the cost were. I mean, when does it get to a point, like what Harold, city manager was saying, where it shouldn't even have to come to us for this? So I guess I'm just trying to understand why we even looking at, why they can't, you know, demolish their home when they have proof of all of this? And staff has already said, yes, this should be demolished. So, I mean, when they have all the proof. So can you explain that to me? I mean, we, just in two sentences, if you can.
So, ultimately, staff can make a recommendation based on our interpretation of the review criteria, and the appointed review body, whether it be Historic Preservation Commission or Planning and Zoning Commission, can disagree with that and make different findings of the review criteria. So, that's pretty much what it comes down to, is, yeah. And that gets back to why you saw the appeal for the garage as well.
Yeah, but then they have proof. You know what I'm saying? The difference is the proof. So, I mean, I don't know. I'm just, it's a shame, it's been four years and I'm still learning about city council. But I just, for other people who may be in the same boat as me, who doesn't understand a lot of it, I just wanted to bring that forth, like, if the people who are developing and putting, I saw the pictures, and I think it's comparable, but more beautiful, of course, but maybe we can, they can, what do they do, those printers, where you put the, 3D printer and put it in a museum and say, here's the historical area, all the homes that had to be demolished, 3D print them and put them, and say, this is the block, and these are the historical homes from 1902, and this is what they look like, but go drive down that street now, and look how beautiful it is. I mean, we could do some things like that, and I think would be very unique for our city. Anyway, sorry, I just, I just wanted to get a little bit more clarification, because I know I'm not the only one in the city of Longmont who's thinking the way I'm thinking. Anyway, thank you for all that you do.
So, I think what she said is correct. We present information just like we do to you all, you make the decisions. I think that's why I made this suggestion, that if it does move to you, maybe council asks for a little bit more information, because I do think, from an operational perspective, asking Jennifer or asking a staff member why a board made a recommendation, of which we intentionally, we made a different recommendation, is hard, because we're asking staff to assume what a board is saying. And I think that also brings some process forward, in terms of, if you're saying, if you're going to bring this to us, you need to justify how you feel it meets a criteria, I think actually adds some due diligence to the point I made, I think four of you all keyed in on that, is essentially asking questions that went to, staff made this recommendation, the decision was made. And I think outside of that, it really is the board's decision.
Okay. Yeah, and I think that requiring the rationale. So the first 12A, it was very cut and dry, as, you know, this, 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 and, you know, you answer yes or no. This was very, 12B was very wishy-washy, and, you know, and I'm concerned that there's also a danger with the foundation, so there's safety issues, and who's going to pay for that? I mean, our boards, they're going to front the money so then we can keep that preservation. So I, you know, so I would like to see something very concrete, and maybe that's as we move forward, next council session, to really hone that in. Councilmember McCoy.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, for offering. Well, I, I'd like to, in light of trying to expedite this, Councilmember Popkin had some suggestions, and I guess my question is, is are the two, the, are you open to adding those? It seemed like the applicant was. Are you open to adding them to your thing? And that's my only question.
Okay. Councilmember Rodriguez.
You have to really determine on the language behind that, because, I mean, the Historic Preservation Commission saw the renderings for the potential, which was a craftsman-style home, which is obviously not a late Victorian-style home, but a craftsman-style home is still technically a historic style of architecture. So, what, where are we going with that? I don't want to get into the weeds on that, and that's, that's my problem with, I mean, like, I would consider the condition in that sense, but where are we going to draw the line, you know? Like, is it, we're going to say, oh, you can choose from this range of architectural styles, or? I mean, that's where I get a little problematic with the consideration of a condition on this.
So, I mean, are we ready to vote as is, last time? I'm going to shut you off.
This will be quick. I'll just clarify, I appreciate Councilmember Rodriguez's concern there. I think my, the spirit of my condition was to offer flexibility, but still kind of do a trust-but-verify kind of condition. If you don't think that's necessary, if you think, like, I don't want to get into parsing what types of architectural significance, and so the spirit of that was to integrate some details at their discretion, that they feel like they're able to move over to still capture some of that. But I don't think there's reasonable cause for an extraordinary finding, and so this would just be kind of more in the spirit of trying to respect kind of perhaps where the Historic Preservation Committee was coming from, but also recognize that they need some reasonable flexibility in how to design this.
Okay.
So, if you don't think that's necessary, I won't push it, but that was the spirit behind that.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Do we have any set design standards for Historic East Side at this point? I know that's partially the conversation surrounding conservation overlay, but...
So we do have compatibility standards within our code that are applicable citywide, so not necessarily specific to Historic East Side, but they are, you know, Jeremy, if you can find the section faster than I can. So, but we do definitely have language in the code about, you know, reflecting scale, et cetera.
So, if it's within scale, could they build like some super post-modern craziness?
So, not to get philosophical on you, but I will get philosophical, there is, so we follow what are called, in Historic Preservation, we follow what are called the Secretary of Interior Standards for Historic Preservation. One of those standards is that you should be able to distinguish the old from the new. A lot of discussion among Historic Preservation Wonks is whether or not modern architecture can be compatible with historic architecture, and there's a very compelling argument to be made that it can be. be made that it can be, and it relates to scale and fenestration and openings and such.
I was the liaison for six years, so I do remember, like, oh, we want to put this addition on, like, well, the lapboard siding can't be the same length as the lapboard siding on the original structure, and I'm like, so I do remember these conversations. But I was just trying to get more to, like, can they build something that looks like super modern? Would that be within their rights, as, you know, property owners for that?
Good evening again, Mayor Protam and Council, Jeremy Trell, Assistant City Attorney. So I think Jennifer's looking at the residential design standards in 1505-110, looking at D2, which says, "New and replacement dwellings, dwelling additions, accessory structures shall be designed to be architecturally compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, as applicable in terms of building material, colors, reforms, building massing, and style and other architectural features." So that's one of the criteria that will be applicable to the new structure, even without any conditions imposed on demolition permit. So we'll have to look at a general, you know, is it similar building materials, colors, reforms? You know, is it a much more massive imposing industrialist design versus the other surrounding properties?
And so my question then would be, what's the, like, sample size taken to determine compatibility with the neighborhood?
Yeah.
Because as we've heard, there's a property that was built in '99, a property built in '94, a property built in '73.
We actually have that as well in the code. So in H1, it depends on the number of properties and parcels in the lot. So for 20 lots or fewer, you look at two models as a comparison. There's a whole list going down, but if it's more than 40 lots, it's at least five models. So that's for staff to consider as it moves through the DRC process.
I think, having listened to that, and I'd be okay with letting our current code determine. So I will not accept a condition amendment at this time.
So let's go ahead and vote. Okay, and that carries unanimously. So we are now, thank you very much. We are now at final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak? No? No, you're welcome. Okay, so now we'll move on to mayor and council comments. Are there any comments from council? Councilmember Popkin.
I just wanted to note that there are a couple of national days that I wanted to flag that we didn't hear in the beginning, public invited to be heard. Today's National Sandwich Day, National Jellyfish Day, and also National Traffic Directors' Day, so I just wanted to give a shout out to all the folks, staff and contractors who helped during the months of construction along the Kaufman Street project, which now looks great. Thank you very much.
Awesome, thanks. City manager remarks.
No comments, Mayor, council.
Okay, and city attorney remarks?
No comments, Mayor Protam.
Okay, and then, before we do that, next week, Monday, because of Veterans Day, we will not have LHA on Tuesday, it is Monday night. So, yes, and so now, councilmember?
Second.
Okay, second, okay, that's been moved in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned.